Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to call tonight's City of Oxford Board of Commissioners' regular monthly meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, August 9th, 2022. It is 7:02 PM and we are assembled here in the Commissioners' Boardroom of City Hall. I'd like to read the mission of the city, which is to serve and improve our community by providing high-quality, affordable services, sound planning for growth and development, and offering the highest possible quality of life while maintaining the public's trust through open communication and ethical standards at all times. I would now like to invite Cam Ford of New Horizons Baptist Church forward. For all those who are so inclined, he will open our meeting in prayer. Let me ask you to join us.
Please have a good day. Thank you so much for this invitation to be here tonight. I'm very honored. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as I was contemplating this great honor tonight and how to approach Your Throne of Grace and what it would be that I would say, I was feeling particularly led to the word "community." I know that we can refer to this as a town, or as a city, or township, or all these other legal definitions, but I kept feeling myself led to the word "community." And I think the reason for this, Lord, is not so much because of Webster's definition of the word "community," but the way I personally feel about the word "community," because I think it fits this wonderful town, this wonderful city, so well. When I think of the word "community," the term "community," I can break it in half, we all can break it in half, and we can see that the first part of that word, "commune," means to come together, to come together as one, to accomplish much as one. And then we look at the second half of that word, "unity," and it essentially means the exact same thing, to come together as one, that though we may come from different backgrounds and though we may have different ideas about this or that, we can surely come together as one in a place that we all love. I am so thankful, Lord, to live in this place. This is my hometown. And I am so grateful for this Board of Commissioners, these leaders. And I pray your blessings upon them on a continual basis, Lord, that you would grant them your wisdom and your knowledge to continue to make bold and wise decisions, and that they would do so, Lord, with this sense of community, so that our community would thrive and be all that it can be within your kingdom. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Reverend Ford, that was absolutely beautiful. Thank you. And now we'll invite Commissioner Seth Lumpkin to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please rise and face the floor.
I put the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. At this time, we'll consider adjustments to and approval of the agenda. Okay, one of the updates is that our city engineer, Amy Ratliff, is not able to be here under delegations to give us an update on infrastructure improvements. So I'd like to suggest that we remove that. And you already have in your agenda that Item D, Item 4D, has been removed for the time being. Are there any other adjustments or comments about the agenda? There are none. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to accept changes in the vote.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Bullock. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the agenda with the aforementioned adjustments? Signal so by saying aye. Any opposed? Like sign? That's if the agenda stands adopted. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance, the Board of Commissioners has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters before the board tonight. If any of you do know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. Let the record note, no conflicts. With that, we move forward to the public comment portion of our agenda. And at which time, people may speak about agenda or non-agenda items. And I would invite Sue Springer to come forward, please. And once you're at the podium, please restate your name and your address for the record and the purpose of your topic during the discussion.
Thank you. My name is Sue Springer. I live at 511 High Street here in Oxford. And I would like to address the current police department situation. To start, I want to address some comments that were made to me two months ago. And the first one is to the city manager. Alan, you live across the street from me, and your comments were that you felt safe in the city, and you think our city is safe, and you sleep well at night. There's a guy named Harry Truman, and he's not the president, Harry Truman, and he was internationally known for his confidence in feeling safe where he lived. And he made international news. And that man is currently buried under a landslide of volcanic ash at the base of Mount St. Helens. So how you feel and reality can be two different things. Next, I'd like to address Commissioner Bridges. Sir, you had said to me that police leave police departments for all kinds of reasons. My situation was I felt that they left for money. So I did a whole bunch of background checks and talked to a lot of people. And apparently, all six of the people that were gone last time did leave for money. We've just lost another officer who was gone to Henderson because he was given a deal he couldn't refuse. So now we're down by seven officers in the past year. Our police will have to start cutting services if this continues. Asheville has already done that. If you have larceny under $1,000, you're going to have to come in and fill out a report. They're not going on any calls if you don't have witnesses and you have not seen or photographed or videotaped whoever it is that did your break-in. And they're handling as many calls as they possibly can by telephone. They're not going out. Our department might have to do that pretty soon. I'd like to set up a fictitious scenario for you. Our county is 532 square miles, and the sheriff's department is also down. And sometimes they only have three deputies on. And if there is a domestic violence call where there are weapons involved, all three of those deputies will end up on that call. So if they're on a call like that, and we have an active shooter at Walmart, which is a very real possibility, given this day and age and how things are going, all of our police officers, and if that is a shift that there's half of who should be on, all of those police officers will end up there. And it is a multi-jurisdictional mass casualty issue, and there will be police and ambulance and fire there from all over the place, Butler, Creedmoor, everywhere that they can come from to help with that. So if all of these people are tied up and somebody, one of you guys, one of us, walks into our home and finds our child or our grandchild on the sofa, not breathing but still warm, when we call 911, we want somebody to show up. We want a cop to show up with Narcan to try and revive them, if we know it's drugs. And if it is drugs, if it's fentanyl and we touch that body and we get fentanyl on us, we could end up dead as well. But this is a very real situation that could happen today. I'm very concerned about our police department not having the people that they need. I talk to everybody. I talk to people at the pool, at the post office, at the stores, on the street, at the barber shop. I talk to people everywhere. And 100%, regardless of race, I'm talking white, black, Hispanic, Asian, gay, straight, wealthy, poor, religious, not religious, 100% of the people that I have talked to that live in this city want our police department funded. That is your responsibility. And you are acting in non-feasance. And the message that that sends to the residents of this city is that we should all buy handguns, learn how to use them, take a concealed carry class, and be ready to protect our families and ourselves, because we don't have a police department to do that for us. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. And next, we have Pierre Jang, who has signed up. Pierre?
And I'm here to address the agenda item of the board, so I'm happy to do that with Ms. Bridges.
Okay. Yes, you did. Is that okay with the board? Wait and have him come and speak at that time?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, we move forward to delegations, and we have the Morgan Ren Employee of the Month, who's Frances Rogers in our finance department. Frances, there you are. You want to come forward? So will everybody please give Frances Rogers a round of applause?
So every month, we designate an employee of the month, and somebody gets nominated. One of our great employees, and we are very proud that this time it is Frances Rogers, who is in our finance department and wears a lot of hats, because I checked her job title three times because of her so few things in it. So the City of Oxford celebrates Frances Bennett Rogers, Payroll and Accounts Payable Senior Accounting Technician in our finance department, with the Morgan Adams Ren Employee of the Month Award for her steadfast attention to detail and focus on communication as a key to understanding and quality service. And it is presented this ninth day of August 2022 by myself and the Board of Commissioners and signed by myself and the city manager. And please give Frances a round of applause. Is there anything that you would like to say about? No, thank you. Well, we appreciate your very hard work. You are like a woman with blinders on. You're always focused on your job. You don't get distracted. You do great work, and it doesn't surprise me at all that you nominated for this board. And I just realized we have to keep this one for ourselves so that we can hang it up where others can see it, and that one is for you. And thank you very much for all that you do for us.
The next two yard of the month? Okay. Well, I would like to invite Ms. Sandra Whitlow to come forward to receive the yard of the month. The Oxford Yard of the Month. Please give her a round of applause.
Beautiful as your heart.
Oh, thank you. Except it doesn't look that good right now.
No, no, no.
The heat's got it.
The heat has gotten everybody's yards, but yours still looks pretty spectacular. So I need to let you all know that Ms. Whitlow, and formerly Ms. Whitlow, with her husband, this is the third time, I think, that we've...
Six. Six. It started in 2004, and that's the first year I think it started.
So I think this is the gold standard, the yard of the month in Oxford. They live on a corner, and Sunset Avenue and Harris Street. And every speck is landscaped. And you've got more on your porch, and every tree has got plantings around it in the corner where there's the stop sign and the street sign, and that's landscaped around. Now you have this lawn thing with crape myrtles going down Harris Street, and then it curves around into the backyard. It's just really amazing. It's really amazing the amount of work. It is. I guess that's what...
I enjoy it, though. This summer had been a really good summer.
It's been a very hot, hard summer with that. So we have Yard of the Month awarded to Sandra Whitlow of 513 Sunset Avenue in recognition of her valuable contribution towards the beauty of our community. Presented this the ninth day of August 2022. And please, y'all, give her a round of applause. Absolutely beautiful. And we have for you, although I think it's probably vocabulary, but now, but you may want to give it to somebody else.
I don't think I do.
Looking back, okay, the 200 Years of Oxford History that was published by Lewis Bowling in celebration of our 200th anniversary in 2016, and an Oxford Green and Clean Place Green Car. Thank you. We appreciate you.
And with this, we will invite our Finance Director, Hap Un, to come up and walk us through the updates on the monthly finance report.
Good evening. So I'm reporting on July's financials. This is the first month, and it's just normal. Everything's on course. Anyhow, I'll go into the report with you. The target for both the revenue and expenditure is 8.33%. As we look at the general fund, the general fund at the end of July is at 8.4%. And that is the total of the actual, to date, is $853,267. And the expenditure for the governmental, the general fund is at 5.7%. And that total is $574,230. So the revenue over the expenditure, we are to the good so far, $279,038. Going back to each of the departments, as you noticed, that the governing board is at 38%. And every year, we have a prepaid for property liability insurance that just takes a hit on that. And of the $94,159, of that, $73,624.10 is the payment to the property liability insurance. Other than that, that's, everybody else is in line. Do I have any questions so far? So moving over to the Water and Sewer Fund, the revenue for the Water and Sewer Fund, Enterprise Fund, is at 10%. And that total is $557,322. And the expenditure is at 6.2%, $343,242. The revenue over expenditure is $213,790. When we look at the cash and investments, the end of July, the total of all the accounts got $23 million, $765,550. Now, that's an increase of 3.5 million. And what make up those totals is that $2.8 million came from the reimbursement for the projects, capital projects. And then we also received our second and final payment for the ARPA fund. That's at $1.4 million. So far, the ARPA money, we have received all of it. The total is $2,831,946. Any question?
Are we spending any money now on assistance because of COVID, or has all of that passed now?
The spending is still continuing. There's two funds that's not on this. This is the major, those are grant money. When we spend, we get reimbursed. And Ms. Hart is monitoring that.
I was just going to ask Ms. Hart if she had anything that she wanted to add to Commissioner Gilreis, to Mr. On's response to Commissioner Gilreis.
No more than this program would end in 2023, June of 2023.
June of 2023?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
But are we, is anyone still applying and receiving and...
Yes.
Okay. How much do you think we spent of that, the $900,000?
I want to say a couple weeks ago, again, I'm now thinking we spent maybe about $115,000 or so. And we still get applications. So we're trying to think of a way for those funds to be used.
Can you repeat that amount? I didn't hear.
I want to say $115,000.
Okay.
But I can see if we want to...
Any questions?
Yeah, my question relates to the ARPA funds. We have guidelines for how that money can be spent, right?
Yes, sir.
And my question is specific to, can some of that money be used for jobs here at the city, hiring new hires and stuff like that?
Managers probably give the answer to that more, you know, eloquently than I can, but I think there's a wide variety of usage for that. The board has total control over that money to, we have to have it in the budget by 2024 and expense it by 2026. But it is, there's so many different ways that we can utilize the funds. And we just have to make sure that it's on the approval list.
Okay, well, you know, I know there has been expressed opinions about staffing in different departments, and I just wondered if some of that money could be used to address the staff shortages in various departments.
I'll qualify my answer by saying that, short answer is yes, that potentially some of the ARPA funds can be utilized for payment of public salaries.
Thank you. Further questions for Mr. On? Okay. We appreciate you taking the time to review this with us and for preparing the report.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we move forward to Item 4, which is public hearings, and we have none scheduled for tonight. So we move on to city business. And Item A is to consider reappointing Juanita Rogers and Linda Edwards to the Planning Board. Both members are very active and will be serving a second term. The Planning Board plays an important role in future development and growth. Therefore, keeping both applicants as we update the comprehensive plan and review major subdivisions is essential. And you have support information in Attachment 5A, which consists of their completed application forms. And recommended action is that staff recommend reappointing both applicants to the Planning Board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion? Okay, I just have a question for Ms. Hart, because I saw an advertisement in the paper for, or I think it would be you, but maybe Ms. Bowen, four open positions on boards, including the Planning Board. Did we have a closing date for when we were telling the public they could put their names into the hat?
I don't think there's a closing date on it, but I want to say that this will be on the agenda for the next board meeting.
This item for the next board meeting, or a different item on the Planning Board for the next board?
A different item. So we have four positions offered, so we reappoint the two. We still have two available positions.
Okay.
So all the applications being considered as a result of the board's...
Okay. Great. And then you would submit all of those names to the board?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
I read something where there's going to be an effort to replace with city residents. Is that something that we're pushing for when we look for individuals on these boards? That we look for city residents?
Yes, because all county authorities are appointed by the county board.
Right.
We are asking that city residents go apply.
So they do have to be city residents?
Yes.
All right.
Excellent. Thank you. Further questions? Okay. Well, with that, all in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item B, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city clerk to investigate the petition sufficiency regarding a contiguous annexation request on behalf of Susan Param Horton, John Horton Jr., and Kenneth Param for property containing 1.42 plus or minus acres located off of Lewis Street. The petitioner is going through the process of having the property rezoned from industrial park development to highway business for an urgent care facility. Currently, the 1.42 plus or minus acres are separated from the city limits by Lewis Street and meet the requirement for contiguous annexation. And you have support information in Attachment 5B. The recommended action is that staff in the Planning Board recommend adopting the resolution authorizing the city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Toby. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item C, consider calling for a public hearing to receive citizen input on a rezoning request from IPD Industrial Park to HB Highway Business for the property located at 735 Lewis Street. The applicant, which is Rural Urgent Care LLC of Birmingham, Alabama, for the property located at 735 Lewis Street, is proposing to develop the property for an urgent care facility. The Planning Board has reviewed the request and found that rezoning the property to highway business would be consistent with the current comprehensive plan, which shows the area as community commercial. Some acceptable uses for community commercial are retail trade, healthcare, social services, and food services. Therefore, the request is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. And you have support information in Attachment 5C. The recommended action is that staff in the Planning Board... The recommended action is that staff and the planning board recommend approving the rezoning of the property. It should be calling for a public hearing. Recommend calling for a public hearing on rezoning the property from IPD to highway business. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, we have a con- comment motion with Commissioners Toby and Bridges. Any discussion?
I just wanna make a short comment.
Yes, sir.
I am delighted to hear that this property will be used as an urgent care facility for a number of reasons. But I went to the emergency room with my granddaughter who had a fever. And all I can say is we were there for over four and a half hours in the emergency room. And as I see this urgent care facility, that gives us other options.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm just happy to see this.
And also, I did read that they had taken all forms of insurance and Medicare and Medicaid, which is another good thing.
Good, good, yes. Okay, excellent. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The motion call for a public hearing carries unanimously. I'm making a note here, just give me a moment. Okay, item four D was removed from the agenda. So we move on to item four E, which is to consider adopting the Oxford Sari Report and Recovery Work Plan. Bruce Nagland with the North Carolina Department of Commerce presented the Oxford Community Economic and Resiliency Initiative Report and Recovery Work Plan to the Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, July twelfth, as you recall from last month. And you have support information in attachment five E. And the recommended action by Bruce Nagland and staff and the Oxford Sari Work Group is that the board adopt the Sari Report and Recovery Work Plan. And so what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
That was a motion by Commissioner Gilreath. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item F, wastewater treatment plant improvement project sole source justification. The wastewater treatment plant improvement project has three bid items that are planned to be sole sourced due to the nature of the items and compatibility of the components with the existing system. With sole sourcing, there is no opportunity for comparing products and pricing to get the lowest bid. However, we believe that the ability to have commonality and continuity at the plant by using these specific items outweighs the possibility of a slightly lower price with a different product and will cost the city less in long run by using items we already stock or are familiar with. And you have support information in attachment five F, which I believe includes a letter from the state as well. And so the recommended action is that staff recommends the board agree to allow sole source on grid enclosures, aerobic digester diffusers, and the control system integrator, which is the SCADA system. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Public Works Chair, Commissioner Bullock. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item G, consider replacing selected pieces of artwork from the downtown art block and adding additional sites or locations. On Tuesday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Oxford Board of Commissioners approved the installation of temporary public art in the downtown area. And you have support information in attachment five G. Recommended action is that the downtown Oxford Economic Development Corporation and city staff recommend approving the replacement of selected pieces of artwork and adding additional artwork at specified locations. And at this time, we invite Pierre Jane, downtown business owner and president of the downtown Oxford Economic Development Corporation to speak. Thank you.
I'll make it quick. As I pointed out a year ago, we put public art on the streets in Oxford. The map that you have hopefully attached shows now eight locations. Currently, there's six. The recommendation by subcommittee and the DOEDC board was to keep two of the six that are currently in Oxford. And those two are the benching piece at Courthouse Square and the birdcage, I'm probably describing them wrong, at the library. Those are also the two properties in town that are owned by the county. So we're not affecting any of the artwork on the county property, so we don't think we need their approval since everything else is gonna be on in city property right away. So these have been renumbered in the map you have because we're recommending replacement of the of the four additional pieces that are out there now. And they all have names. I think you have the pictures in there. And then we're recommending the addition of two new locations. One will be at the corner of Cooper and East Spring Street, which is the far end of Hicks Park on the Spring Street side. And the other, Orange Street and West Spring Street, on either side of the road, either social services side or there's a development on the other side of the road, one of those two locations. And both of those pieces are in the booklet that you have. We did go out in partnership with the city Public Works Director to solicit artists focused specifically in North Carolina and got seven, seven or eight responses to that. You know, the ones that are out there today are all from one artist, from the Charlotte area. So these selections are from, including him, four artists will be represented and one from Henderson. So there's some good diversity in terms of the pieces this time. And I think that the pieces are, they're fun, they're colorful. And now they're a little bit more size appropriate for the locations that they're in, something maybe we didn't fully appreciate last round. So happy to answer any questions about the process or the pieces. The goal tonight would be to get your approval to go ahead and land these on the ground by the hot sauce festival.
Excellent. Yes, sir, Commissioner Toby.
Just one question. Are there any local, when I say local, Oxford?
So I don't think we had any responses that were from folks in Oxford. So Vance County was the closest that we got. And we did, we advertised on two sort of North Carolinas sites for art that artists would recognize.
Just wondering because I know we've got some talent in Oxford.
Well, I personally tried to recruit the talent that I know of, but there was no spots, unfortunately. But which is the piece that's from Henderson?
So that's the piece called Tree of Life.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, it's an ivy with the tree cut out of it. So hopefully this grows. Again, the goal would be to continue to update these and grow the area. This map that you see is actually the map that would go live onto the website. So people can find their way with the QR codes for where the other pieces are.
Great. Yes, sir, Commissioner Bridges.
Yeah, what is the rental amount? I mean, how, we're paying the artists, right?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so the budget for this comes out of the DOEDC's budget. And it is, the way it's presented when we put it out for RFP is that it's up to a thousand dollars per year rental. Some are not that much. I think the one piece that goes, it's gonna replace at Watson's parking lot is like six hundred. So it's really up to the artists to provide that. And we tell them, we wait the art piece with that value and then we just select the ones that work. So we don't expect we'll actually use the full budget amount based on, based on the submissions that we got.
Any questions for Mr. Jane?
I have a question and a thought. The question is regarding the one that is slated for out at Hicks Field. The style of it indicates to me that I believe children will feel compelled to get close to it. And so I just wanted to ask, one, would that be a problem? And two, will it be placed in an area that would allow for that?
So I don't know if you wanna address the location relative to children's access to the piece?
Yeah, I mean, kids are gonna have access to it. It will be concrete into the ground. So I mean, if somebody would climb on it, it's not gonna be.
And it, but it's not gonna be too close to the street or something. I mean, I think that was kind of my concern is it just looks, it's that arch. And it just looks like the kind of thing that when kids are at the playground, they're gonna wanna hang on it. So you don't want it too close to the street.
You're right.
So there'll be a way.
We'll keep it as hard as we can.
Excellent, wonderful. And the other comment I had was just related to personally, my experience last year when we installed them was there was obviously a lot of discussion and buzz in town. And I was able to get a lot of people interested by saying, these are the six names. Go look at the sculptures and see if you can match the name with the sculpture. So I don't know if that's something that you wanna do before you put all the information out there because people get kind of interested in trying to figure out which is which. So I just throw that out there for your pondering.
They do. And we did this year try, because we were selecting off of one artist last year effectively just to get it in place.
Right.
Before hot sauce. This year, these pieces are quite a bit larger. The one that's slated for Warehouse Square, which is kind of hidden a little bit behind the parked car, same in front of PNC, kind of hidden. The one at Warehouse Square is twelve feet tall. The three graces at the armory that are replacing the COVID spike, or whatever you wanna call it, is also, there's three substantial pieces. So the idea was to get, I think we got the conversation started last year, positive or negative feedback. This year, I think there's a little bit more purpose put into what sort of landed where. It was great to have a selection. There was probably forty or so pieces that got submitted.
Yeah, no, I wasn't commenting about where they were located. It was more like maybe don't match the names and the pieces right away so that.
You're saying initially?
Initially, so that you can get the public kind of trying to see each of them and match it up.
One of the things we had talked about last year, and of course, it was COVID and we sort of just couldn't, couldn't get out of the way of it, was to do a, say, a ribbon cutting of sort on the art block. And so now it's become, it's a little more substantial and it's spread out. That potentially we could do something like that to really introduce people publicly to the fact that it's there, where to find the information, how to sort of activate it a little bit more for the public.
Great. Any further questions? We really appreciate your work on this and your work.
Yeah, thank you for Steve. He put a lot of work into it.
It's really exciting for the city. So do we have a, have we had a motion yet? What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Fields. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Eight pieces of art in downtown Oxford. That's awesome. Thank you so much. And with that, we move forward to the consent agenda, which includes accepting the finance report that Finance Director Ahn just reviewed with us, as well as the meeting minutes from our agenda meeting and regular meetings in July. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
I think that was Commissioner Lumpkins and Toby. Any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Before we adjourn to closed session, we'll do some reminders. Actually, the sidewalk sale was this past weekend. And this coming Friday, we have music on Main downtown in front of the hub from six to eight. Also on Friday during the day from eleven to four is the fiftieth anniversary celebration for the Oxford Housing Authority. Please consider going out. And if you have kids, there's gonna be checkers, spades, bounce house, cornhole, face painting, food trucks, Kona ice, all kinds of things. So that should be a really great celebration for a great organization. I maintain we probably have the best housing authority director in the country. So go out and celebrate. Yes, ma'am.
What day was that?
That's Friday, the twelfth, from eleven in the morning to four in the afternoon. Do you have a difference?
There's a presentation at one o'clock.
Correct. Thank you. Yes. Oh, no, I put four. Mayor Pro Tem is correct. It's eleven to six with a program at one. Yeah, good, good for all kinds of things. And let's go through comments from board members while we still have folks in the room. Commissioner, first of all, I would also like to make excuses for Commissioner Khan, who is not well. That's why he is not here tonight, so we'll keep him in our thoughts and prayers. And Commissioner Gilreath, do you have anything to add?
Well, I just want to commend the Recreation Department. I'm finally retired and have been enjoying the services. I took tennis and I missed, you know, a couple of meetings because I was going to my tennis lesson. They took priority all of a sudden. But anyway, I mean, and it was absolutely fabulous. My daughter had an opportunity to participate in your summer camp program and the interactions that I observed and listening to her comments. She had, it was a wonderful program. She really, really enjoyed it. And it was, I think when I signed her up, I was concerned that we may not have enough children to participate. Man, you had a house full. I mean, so it was, it was a good, good, good program. And I thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Toby?
Well, I think I'm too old and slow to play tennis, but. I wanna thank the city residents for putting up with all the roadworks that are going on there. Please bear with us. It's gonna get better. And also, on a personal note, a member of my family had the occasion on Saturday night, early as a Sunday morning, to be taken into hospital. But before that, someone called the police department. And the police department went around there to make sure that he was okay. So I wanna commend the police department for doing what they do. I think it was very nice of them to go around there. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Commissioner Bridges?
Just that I enjoyed going to the night hours, prime function, you know, to get around and talk to law enforcement officers and see some community folk. You know, I think it's important for us to acknowledge the men and women who protect us every day. And it was a good turnout. It was great food. And I just, and they gave away a lot of stuff. Good Lord. I think I got three book bags. I got a book bag for all my grandbabies and so it was nice.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem?
I would like to, on behalf of my church, I would like to thank Public Works Department for bailing us out. I'm not gonna go into detail. He's laughing. But Johnny on the spot, thank you so much. To the Oxford Police Department again for Johnny on the spot with the house we have on the property. Knowing the person that was going in and out there with us, thank you, thank you. They go above and beyond. Thank you to our city staff, all of them. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner Bullock?
Yes, just a note to the board and you, Mayor. Granville County Human Relations Commission has started the process last couple of months of inviting communities into our meetings. Creedmoor, two months ago, last night was a STEM. And we're planning in June to invite you. I'll have an email coming out confirming time, location, and a few key points. But please keep that in mind for September the tenth.
September the tenth.
Seven more than likely, but I'll let you know in a few days for sure.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Lumpkins?
I just wanted to echo about the national night out. Me and my wife and daughter went. I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved with that. It was awesome. I had fun. You know, my daughter's obsessed with the fire trucks and the police cars, so she was, it was really cool to see her up close and personal with them. So I wanna thank everybody. We made a, with the wreck department, we made a putt and got some frisbee and all that. She's been slinging around the house. Just thank everybody involved with that. That was great. And I also wanted to bring up the surveys for the comprehensive plan, just to make everybody aware of that, that you can go on the website and take those surveys. It's really important. So that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Before I continue on to our city manager, I just wanted to ask you colleagues, this is something I noticed a while ago and only thought about it as we were, had the planning board on the agenda tonight, that the last time Cindy sent out to us an update of the booklet with all the different boards and commissions, it looks like over the years, the ma-
it looks like over the years, the makeup of the board with, like, they should have had staggered terms, and now, you know, five people will be up in one year, they're no longer staggered, and I wonder if at some point we can maybe come together in a planning committee meeting and just go through it and talk about kind of getting it back symmetrical, I guess. You know, if we want staggered boards, if we don't care, that we know we don't care, but if we want to have a board where the members, you know, two are up one year and two are the next and so on, that we maybe take a look. Is that something that y'all would be willing to do? It doesn't have any urgency, but it just seems like over the years, it's kind of gotten out of sync.
It makes things better continuity and understanding and not having way too many new people at the same time.
Right.
Or, yeah, I truly like that idea.
Excellent, okay, thank you. That was it, and I'm, I'm gonna apologize for not being at all of these great events that were happening, and I got against crime, and our meeting last week, and the visioning thing, which I think was probably really awesome. I'm sorry I missed it, but I had COVID, but I don't anymore. It's all good. Mr. Thornton? No, I'm good, I checked multiple times.
Just a couple of things in regards to the comprehensive plan process. Everyone will still have the opportunity for engagement at another public meeting or two. I think that will be scheduled during the process of the compilation of that plan. I'll also let you know that for the folks in the room and for the folks in the area that are watching us, there is a job fair tomorrow. Gonna be out at Hicks Field, we'll be participating in that, and the positions that we have available will certainly be there, and we hope that if you're interested in seeking a career, you'll come out. So that begins tomorrow at 10:00. Of course, hot sauce planning and preparation is well underway. We're planning for a really great event, so if the Lord will bless us with a beautiful day. We're expecting 12,000 to 15,000 of our closest friends on that date, September the 10th, so we're looking forward to that, I hope everybody can attend. I will also echo Commissioner Tovey's comments regarding the, not only the resurfacing, but the infrastructure replacement projects that are ongoing, that are so furiously working out there like an army of ants, trying to in large part get out of the way for the resurfacing to take place. I went around today, and I know that some folks have some frustration in trying to get from one part of town to the other with all the roads closed and the detours and all those kinds of things, but please remember that this resurfacing initiative has been planned for five years. So, you know, here it is, and now it's taking place, so bear with us for a little while, and we think that the end result will be well worth the wait. I'd also like to add that I'm disappointed that my neighbor didn't decide to stick around for the remainder of the meeting, but I still sleep well at night, and I encourage her and the rest of the folks in the community that sleep well at night to come next month and hear the chief of police do a presentation on the most recent total crime index report that we have for the city of Oxford. And that's all I'll say about that, that'll be just a little, what do they call it, tantalizer or whatever they do? For TV, for the fall season, teaser. So, yeah, please tune in for that next month. I think you'll be, I don't think you'll be surprised, but I think you'll be pleasantly pleased.
Excellent. And is that it?
That's all I got.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and I do wanna add, thank you for sending out the map and the update and the notification about the resurfacing starting. It's great to be able to put that out online and...
Yeah, we're, we're working every day to try to keep that updated, because it's moving so quickly.
We really appreciate that. Mr. Burnett, do you have anything to add?
Ma'am.
Okay, well...
Let me correct myself. I looked at a note, but I realized I looked down on a note that the 10th is the Hot Sauce Festival.
Yes, it is, indeed.
The Human Relations Committee will be on the 12th.
Okay.
Monday, the 12th.
Excellent. Oh, thank you for catching it, I think you get high marks for figuring it out before we adjourn. So with that, we are scheduled to go into closed session according to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, paragraph A5, to establish or instruct the staff or agent concerning the negotiation of the price and terms of contract concerning the acquisition of real property located at or to establish or instruct staff or agent concerning the negotiations of the amount of compensation or other terms in employment contracts. So with that, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
We have a concomitant motion from Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner Tovey, any discussion? All in favor of going into closed session, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries, and I would like to ask our Recreation Director to stay on for a bit. And everybody else, thank you very much for coming out tonight, be safe and sound, take care, drive safely, stay cool, drink water.